Chair, the meeting is now being recorded.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of June 23rd, 2025 to order. Will the secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Benager?
Present.
Commissioner Scamilla? Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Fam?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here in America.
Vice Chair Ramos? Chair Oliva?
Here.
Chair, quorum has been reached at 5:38 PM.
Um, please throw me in the pledge of allegiance. Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. And when speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public may attend Planning Commission meetings in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the Commission Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at And on YouTube at If you would like to participate and provide public comment, you may do so in the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is being discussed. Please enter the meeting ID number 86235853278. Select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. Once called upon, remember to unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You can also join the meeting by calling 669-900-6833. Enter meeting ID 86235853278. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press 9 to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the last three digits of your phone number. After you are called upon, you may press 6 to unmute yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the recording secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time is up.
For the record, I'd like to make note that Commissioner Scamilla joined us at 5:39 PM. Moving on to public comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to speak and comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it into the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please select the hand icon to let us know you would like to comment. If you are calling in and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please dial 9 and then 6 to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds. Chair, we have one speaker.
Gail Olivos, please approach the microphone.
Good evening, council, commissioners, chair. My name is Gail Olivos. I'm from the Olivos family. Some of you are too young to remember, but my family has over 120 years here in the city of Santa Ana. We were the owners of the Yoast Theater and the Cinema West Coast Theater in downtown Santa Ana, among the Plaza Olivos and a couple of commercial buildings. I don't have a hidden agenda for coming tonight. I'm not a developer. I'm not a business owner anymore. I'm here just to assure that we have a better Santa Ana, which I want to leave for my children and my grandchildren. And I'm deeply concerned with the development that's going on in my city, the overdeveloped, to say the least, that's going on. Recently, I've been attending some zone meetings. Um, and I was a little perturbed by the fact that they go extremely fast. I'm overwhelmed with what they're presenting to me. And I walked away with more questions than answers. But the fact that they're changing zonings from some areas has me concerned. And they're actually trying to present buildings for joint use of some sort with details and apartments up in front. And most disturbing was the fact that the city of Santa Ana, I don't know why they did this, but they outsourced to for this presentation. It wasn't an in-house presentation. It took me two meetings to realize that the person speaking wasn't even from Santa Ana. So she didn't know the streets. She didn't know what was going on. So I'm concerned. And I'll tell you mainly why I'm concerned. This team here, maybe not you personally, but the Planning Commission approved the one Broadway Plaza 20 years ago, more than that. And it's a two-day right now on Broadway and 10th. We have a pile of dirt. And nothing has been addressed about that. And yet, the same developer pulled a permit for more apartments. So I am, what is going on? So before these developers from behind me come up and do their pitch about how it's going to help low-income, you know, apartments for low-income housing and help, whatever they plan to do, please factor that in. Because I don't see, I don't think we need any more apartments or dwellings. I come from Willard. There are 10,000 residents in and out of Willard on a daily basis. Let me say that again. 10,000. Because the commissioners of the planning people overbuild apartments in that unit. And if you know Willard, if you're from Santa Ana, you'll know Willard. It's a small, little area surrounded by Floral Park, um, Washington Square. And it, it just makes me upset that we don't want that for the future of Santa Ana. We need more open space. Um, and that's about it. I'm watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speakers online?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve item A, minutes from May 12th, 2025, and item B, excused absences?
I'd like to move item A and B on a consent calendar.
You know, second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Wu and a second from Commissioner Scamilla. Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Benager?
Aye.
Commissioner Scamilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Fam?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos? Chair Oliva?
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Ramos and Leo absent.
Thank you. This concludes the consent calendar items. Moving on to the public hearing. But before we, before we start the business calendar, I did want to share that we do have Spanish translations for anyone joining us that would, that needs Spanish translations. Si alguien en el público desea traducción, tenemos un traductor que le puede ayudar. Por favor, acérquese con el secretario para más información. And also to my fellow commissioners, I know that the political climate might inspire us to say a few words that might be a little off topic. I encourage my fellow commissioners to stay on topic on what we're talking about, especially what the Planning Commission is here to do. And we stay focused. Thank you. I will now review the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. Then the public hearing will be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. Then the applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. Then the public hearing will be closed. Discussion will then return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name and address, strictly voluntary. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral to the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Please note, decisions on these matters are final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or party. Recommendations on these matters will be forwarded to the city council at a later date for final determination. This is the time and place for density bonus agreement number 2025-03 for the property located at 2130 East Ford Street, located within the Village Center District of the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Seeing none, case planner Pedro Gomez will provide a brief presentation.
Chair, if we could just take a quick pause, it looks like the YouTube video is not streaming. Um, if we can contact our folks in IT, or is that not happening tonight?
No, YouTube's not actually, it's not working. We have technical difficulties, but we are live via Zoom. So we can still have speakers that way.
Thank you. So for anyone in the public that's following along with us virtually tonight, please use the Zoom feed instead. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, fellow commissioners. The first item on today's agenda is a request for approval of density bonus application number 2025-03 to allow the construction of a 15-unit multifamily residential development, including three units proposed as affordable to very low-income households earning less than 30% to 50% of the area median income at the property located at 2130 East Fourth Street. Uh, the property has a general plan designation of District Center Medium High, or DC3, and it's Zone Professional. It's located within the Metro East, uh, Use Mixed Use Overlay Zone, or the MIMU. It's surrounded by professional offices to the north and the west, medical and professional offices to the east, and multifamily residences to the south. Uh, the project site is currently developed with a two-story office building and parking lot, both constructed in the early 1970s. Uh, since its development, the office building has been occupied by various professional and medical office uses. Um, Olive Crest is a nonprofit organization founded in 1973 that offers a range of services uh, between 1973 and 1993. Olive Crest office was located at the North, uh, North Park Plaza in the city of Santa Ana. From 1993 through 1995, their offices were in the city of Anaheim. And in 1995, Olive Crest permanently moved their headquarters to 2130 East Ford Street, Unit 100. In the past year, all previous tenant leases have expired or not been renewed, and Olive Crest is the sole occupant of the building. Uh, this slide provides some information on the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. Uh, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 became effective on January 1st, 2020, and established a statewide housing emergency until January 1st, 2025. On January 1st, 2022, um, the Housing Crisis Act was extended until January 1st, 2020, 30, uh, with the passage of Senate Bill 8. Uh, on August 1st, uh, 2023, the applicant submitted an SB 330 preliminary application, or Housing Crisis Act application, for the proposed project, which was deemed complete on August 17, 2023. Among other stipulations, SB 330 requires the following for applicable housing developments. Uh, new non-adjective development standards established after January 1st cannot be imposed, excuse me, January 1st, 2020 cannot be imposed or enforced. Uh, applicable, applicable housing development projects must receive a decision in more than five public hearings. And prohibits any moratorium project or action that would result in a net downsizing, limit the number of permits to be issued, or otherwise reduce housing or limit overall population. As an SB 330 project, the project is not subject to any additional entitlement requirements to activate the MIMU. And the development will consist of two identical, two-story buildings, each approximately 7,900 square feet in size, to be located towards the rear uh, or south of the existing site. The project would be developed with a gross density of 5.68 dwelling units per acre. And the units are designed as flats or apartments with uh, Building A1 having seven two-bedroom units in an area dedicated as common area to include community room, office, bathroom, and laundry area. And Building A2 would include eight two-bedroom units. The unit sizes would vary between 761 and 785 square feet. And each unit would be fully equipped with a kitchen, bedrooms, bathrooms, and common living areas. Again, the project would include affordable units with the three units designated to very low-income households, uh, earning 30% to 50% of the AMI. The density bonus agreement, um, considered for tonight is for concessions and a waiver to deviate from publicly accessible open space, private open space, parking requirements, and common open space requirements. On this slide, we have the site photos looking east and southeast of the site. And just for context, this is the rear of the existing office building, uh, within the parking area. And on this slide, we have the proposed site plan, just kind of a larger view. You can see that Fort Street is on the right hand of the slide with access, drive access extending, um, that be north to south. And then this is kind of just a closer look of, um, the site plan. You can see that the affordable units are presented on the site plan as to the location. And here we have the proposed floor plans, the conceptual landscape plan, and the proposed elevations. Uh, the project incorporates a combination of a contemporary slash Mediterranean architectural uh, style consistent with many multifamily and mixed-use residences uh, in the area and under construction in the city of Santa Ana. The overall design, massing materials, and features are intended to be compatible with, yet distinct from multifamily residences existing and currently under construction. The architectural style is characterized by a combination of stucco walls painted in warm earth-tone color, natural stone, wainscoting along the building, uh, window trims and exposed rafter tails. As part of the project, the applicant is seeking concessions allowable by the California Density Bonus Law, which allows developers proposing five or more residential units to seek increases in base density for providing onsite housing units in exchange for providing affordable units onsite. Uh, to make, to help make constructing onsite affordable units feasible, the law, the law allows developers to seek up to three incentives and concessions and or unlimited number of waivers, which are essentially variances from development standards that would help the project be built without significant burden and without detriment to the public health. Uh, pursuant to the California Government Code, a local jurisdiction is limited in its ability to deny requested incentives, concessions, and waivers. Uh, this developer is not requesting a state density bonus for additional units, but will avail themselves to the incentives and concessions and waivers that are required to be provided for projects with requisite affordability. Due to the project's 20% affordable rate, the developer can seek three incentives or concessions and unlimited waivers. And the requested incentive concessions include, um, publicly accessible open space, which requires a concession to provide no publicly accessible open space for this project. It'd be the private open space, so a concession is required to provide no private open space. And then a concession to provide no parking spaces for the residential units. And then lastly, the waiver would be for the common open space, which is required to waive, um, the rate of open space required at 1.4% of the gross site area, or about 1,400 square feet. Uh, pursuant to the Santa Ana Municipal Code, uh, Section 41-1607, the Planning Commission must review and approve the deviations based on specific findings. Uh, the Planning Commission's approval of the deviations is based on the followings presented on this slide. And then, uh, based on the analysis provided within the report, uh, the proposed development will materially assist in accomplishing the goal of providing additional affordable and market, uh, affordable units uh, and market rate housing stock in the city, and will be consistent with the applicable designation in the General Plan Land Use Element. In addition, the proposed deviations are necessary to make the project economically feasible uh, pursuant to the Santa Ana Municipal Code. Uh, the proposed project aligns with several goals and policies of the city of Santa Ana's general plan, including, uh, the land use element, Goal LU1, and LU4, and the housing element, uh, Goal HE2. The project exceeds the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, or the Affordable, um, Affordable Housing Opportunity and Creation Ordinance, AILCO, um, by providing three onsite units generally affordable to very low-income households earning 30% to 50% of the AMI. And then the AMI for Orange County is currently set at 84,600 for a four-person household size. Uh, two affordable units would be included in Building A2 and would be 785 square feet in size. And the additional affordable unit would be included in Building A1 and would be 100, uh, 761 square feet in size. Again, each affordable unit would be fully equipped with a kitchen, bedrooms, bathroom, and common living areas, uh, ensuring a high standard for living for the future residences. Uh, the developer's inclusionary housing plan has been reviewed and approved by the city's housing division. And then pursuant to SEQA and the SECO guidelines, the proposed project is exempt from further environmental review under Section 15168, or Program EIR. And this exemption applies when a previously certified program EIR has adequately analyzed the environmental effects of an activity and no new significant impacts would result from the proposed project. Uh, therefore, a notice of exemption ER, uh, number 2023-94 will be filed for this project. Uh, with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving concessions and a waiver or reduction in the development standard for, as memorialized in Density Bonus Agreement 2025-03 as conditioned. I'm available for questions, and I know the applicant is here in attendance. Should there be any questions directed to them? Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Benager?
The, uh, one thing that sticks out to me is the parking. And they're asking for that variance because of the parking lot around them, or what's?
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me just find the right page for that.
Okay.
Uh, the reason for the request for the concession, um, is not necessarily that they don't have the sufficient parking. Because as, as they can see on the site plan, there's plenty of parking. Um, the reason for that is because of what's triggered from required parking in terms of building code compliance. Um, they would have to provide, um, meet today's building code requirements and provide, uh, either, um, chargers or have the infrastructure for future chargers, which would require, um, a big investment. Uh, I think notably a transformer and Edison. And so it would just be cost prohibitive. And so they're requiring or requesting a, um, concession to not require any parking. Um, so that, that act would mean that per building code, they wouldn't have to kind of trigger those sort of additional requirements. But in terms of planning review, there isn't going to be any sort of parking impacts that we anticipate.
Okay, alright. Um, is this, is there a school or park nearby this, this development?
A school?
Is there a playground, playground nearby?
The nearest playgrounds or school or open space that's identified would be Cabrio Park. And that's, um, I guess, north, northwest of the site. There's the zoo as well. And I'd say anywhere between, um, let's see, I can do a quick math here. But yes, there's parks nearby for this site, which would be about maybe 2,400 lineal feet uh, from the site, and that would be the Cabrio Park.
Gotcha. Also, if I understand correct, there's to build eight units and three will be low-income, correct?
There would be three very low-income units.
The other ones would be rented at market rate?
And the other would be market rate, yeah. So 15 total units, and three of those would be very low-income.
Okay, alright. Um, that's all questions that I have right now.
Commissioner Scamilla?
Yeah, uh, quick, uh, this, these might be more comments because I think, um, the design review is outside of our scope here. But I know it seems to be going for that, as you said, contemporary Spanish kind of combination. Um, wondering whether or not it might be, um, better from an aesthetic perspective just to go straight into the Spanish style that they seem to be doing pretty well. Um, but then that would maybe say removing the stone veneers that are kind of across the base and instead, uh, using something that's a little bit more appropriate to the style. So either, you know, um, oh my gosh, tile work, anything kind of in that Spanish Mediterranean style, or additional detailing in some of the more kind of, um, the larger blank spaces that are going to be there onsite. So I think just as far as aesthetics go, that would be the only consideration that I'm seeing with, with this particular development. Uh, but other than that, it, you know, is what appears to me to be a relatively good use of, um, excess parking space that's already existing on the site. So in a sea of parking, uh, to be able to add 15 units for people that really need them, uh, I think would be, you know, something that I'm generally supportive of. So, you know, thanks for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Fam?
You know, during the, the planning process, uh, was there an analysis of, um, if in fact, the EV charging is cost prohibitive? Because my understanding is this is a commercial, um, lot. And so there should be power that for commercial capacity to, to this parcel. Um, and there is an increase in 15 residential units. So I'm assuming there would be a power upgrades regardless if the existing commercial power isn't adequate. Um, when we, when we accepted this concession, uh, was there a cost analysis that was, uh, provided to, to staff?
Uh, short answer, no. For the Planning Commission's awareness, this project has been submitted, um, what's called, um, at risk to building plan check. And so in terms of the development team knowing kind of what's required in order to kind of make this work, they're fully aware of that. They've gotten at least a couple rounds of, um, comments. And so they have a pretty good understanding of what would be, um, you know, per code. But, um, also, staff is pretty limited in what we can request in terms of justification for the requests that come through, through the state density bonus law. Um, so, but yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Pedro. And I don't want that to be lost on the commission that recent changes to state legislation have really continued to erode local authority in asking for additional information when it comes to these concessions. So while I understand that your question is rooted very well in sort of like, how difficult is it to really get that type of information? Unfortunately, now the law says that more or less we would have to commission the studies to get that information at our taxpayers' expense. So, um, so I would encourage you as a commissioner, if that is something of topical importance to you, that you could always pose that question for, um, knowledge and information to the applicant to see if they have information to share with you as part of your decision-making process.
And then the staff report, uh, there was a mention of a traffic impact study. Uh, was that not required due to the nature of the application?
I think I understood most of the question, um, but just in case I didn't, can you repeat that?
Uh, the staff report didn't mention a traffic impact, uh, analysis. I was wondering if, uh, the project was exempt from, uh, that analysis due to the nature of the application?
Thank you. That's a good question. I don't recall if this was something that was, for example, um, uh, like a VMT memo was out provided to exclude them from, um, providing a traffic impact analysis. But also given the nature of what's being proposed, 15 units, it likely didn't meet the threshold to require one.
Uh, that's all for me. Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
I may be re-asking some of the questions that were put by the other commissioner, because I couldn't hear the answer very well. Number one is, what is the total amount of units?
Fifteen.
Fifty?
Fifteen, one-five.
One-five, fifteen, of which five are affordable?
Three are affordable.
Three are affordable, okay. And who owns that parking lot over there in the left corner?
I'm going to follow along the edge of the property line here.
The upper-left corner?
Up here?
Yeah.
This is all part of the same site, and it's owned by Olive Crest.
Okay, so Olive Crest does all that. So when you say there is no parking, there's no parking to those unit underneath the unit, but there's parking within a walking distance, right?
There's no parking that's being provided as a result of this project. There's nothing that is going to generate new parking because of this. But there's all this existing parking that's surface parking from the development from the 1970s that would be used by, potentially if needed, the residences.
Okay, let me try to get it in, in plain language. So, the developer is not proposing parking as one of the concessions, right? For doing the affordable housing?
The request, one of the concessions requested is to not have any parking requirements for the residential component of this project. No new parking triggered by this residential development.
Okay, so generally, what's happening is that we had the general plan, which spells out our vision for the city. And we set some kind of zoning requirement for residential building that we like to see, which is now out the window because of some, because I don't know what other word to use other than concession, okay? Or agreement or whatever, that we forego those things because of some state legislations, right? And other factors that happened along the way. So it's out of our hand, in other words, right? Okay, so, between the out of our hand and what our desires are, what can we do to ensure that that's a good development for the city? Are the residents of that property going to be people that don't need cars? Will they not have visitors? But they will be able to use that other parking lot up there on the left-hand corner, right?
Thank you, Commissioner. The first part of your question, that's part of it. This is specifically for transitional age youth, or TAY.
Transitional what?
Aged youth, TAY, T-A-Y. And those are individuals who are coming out of foster care between the ages of 18 and 24. That's part of it. Some of those individuals don't have cars. The other part of it is that this, this whole development has a surplus of 19 parking stalls. So the residential development has a requirement, the office has a requirement. This entire site has a surplus of 19 parking stalls with the combined development. So in a review and an analysis, we determine there's no parking issue.
Thank you. That clarifies, clarify why we're doing that way because of the existing. Now, is there any other future planning for the rest of their property that will impact that? Well, with transitional youth, you're right, they may not, they take the bus for now. They won't need it, but will any other future development impact our thinking?
Staff has not been made aware of any future development on this site, but that may be a good question for the developer applicant if the commissioner chooses to ask that question.
Thank you very much.
I had a clarifying question, because I was under the impression there was going to be five units that were going to be available, that there was going to be three very low-income and two affordable. Did I, did I mix up the numbers?
To clarify, there's 15 total units. So eight in one building and seven in another building. And of the entire development, there'd be three units proposed as affordable. Two of them are in one building, and the other one is in the second building.
Oh, then I read it incorrectly. Okay. I was under the impression that it was going to be three very low-income and two affordable. Is there any way we can zoom in on the, on the... And if you could point out which, which of the, which of the units were going to be the, the ones that were earmarked for, for the very low-income and affordable?
Sure. There's two in Building A2, one's identified here on Level 1, the second on Level 2. And then Building A1 has one unit identified at Level 2. So there's 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's the extent of my questions for, for staff. Any additional questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone.
Thank you. This is my first building commission meeting. So I'm Carrie Dunkelberger. Our CEO, Donald Valour, who's on the docket, is up in our Washington offices right now. So I have been with Olive Crest for over 30 years. I wanted to thank you guys so much for allowing us to serve the City of Santa Ana. We've been in our location for over 30 years as well. And we've just had the privilege of serving housing insecure, food insecure families for all those years. And this will allow us to serve even more of our population, who are kids that have been often grown up in foster care, have exited foster care. And about 60% of those are homeless within the first year. So I would say almost all of those housing units will satisfy the need of kids that would otherwise be homeless or couch surfing. And what is different about our kids is they've already shown extreme resiliency. Over 80% of those young adults will be achieving college degrees while they're with us and receiving supportive services. So we'll have ed and employment coaches working with them and case managers. So we will allow them to be real successful.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Benninger?
Could you go a little further detail about the, the residents you're looking in these units are really kids in transition from, from reaching age of 18 and going into life, correct? And how are they going to afford the rent for these?
And how are they?
How are they going to afford the rent for these buildings? Or all apartments?
So, we don't charge rent. We charge a stipend for them that ends up being a, a holding of a, it's returned to them upon emancipation from the program. So we know a lot of these youth have no safety net whatsoever. So that is done through our fundraising efforts. And we will be, that will be just part of our support that we'll be offering.
Interesting, because really, as far as low-income, you really have 18 that are low-income then, basically. Interesting. Thank you. All said, thank you.
Commissioner Scamia.
Yeah, no, thank you for that and for the work that you do. Familiar with your organization and the work with, oh my gosh, the, the specific challenges of TAY youth. So the, I think you explained it well enough right now. So essentially, you're, you have deed-restricted, you know, three units, but effectively, you will be subsidizing the rent for every participant within, sorry, every person within your program here at this location. I was wondering whether or not you're also going to then allow, other than non-TAY youth here? Because it do seem to be like maybe two-bedroom units, right? So I'm not sure if like, the way that folks are going to be screened and applied for, you know, like if it's going to be just one application with one family, like, per unit? Or if it's going to be, you know, matching TAY youth? Just to get a better understanding of the types of, you know, the types of family formation you're going to be having here?
For the two-bedroom units, we would be having two clients in each of those apartments. And we do a pretty significant screening. They have to show, like I say, some propensity to graduation. We have a graduation tomorrow with seven of our applicants that are in scattered site apartments right now. So we're real proud of our outcomes. There may be a couple of our clients that somehow have fallen through the gaps of anything that is provided in terms of supportive services. And that would be the clients that we're looking at for the low-income housing.
Okay, and so I guess the, the other thing, this might become an issue later, maybe not. So just the way that people tend to walk, they'll, they'll walk the straightest, shortest possible pathway. And I think right now, the pedestrian pathway kind of curves around into the parking lot a little bit. So I would just say, and to keep an eye out for that just in case there might need to be some adjustments and improvements to the walkway. Because I think if you do have anyone that's going to be coming in from the bus side, like, you know, if that was me, I would just cross through the street, and I wouldn't go all the way around, even though that was the designated sidewalk. So I know that it works probably from a site plan perspective, but naturally, you know, there might be some kind of improvements or adjustments that might need to be made over time. So just to, you know, keep a lookout for that. And to the, you know, kind of question earlier, as far as any additional development, I think this is actually an appropriate site for additional development. So, you know, this is probably your, your first test case there, but I wouldn't necessarily rule out anything in the future. You know, if there are any plans there, obviously, you know, bring the, the city in as early as possible, because we do know that this particular population has an extremely high propensity towards becoming homeless. And if you're not able to intervene in those target years, it's really hard to recover from that, so.
Commissioner Pham.
I appreciate your presentation. It shed a lot more light on kind of the unit mix and, and the sizing. My, my question to build on top of what Commissioner Benninger spoke about in terms of the income restriction, since you're subsidizing all these units, why weren't they all deed-restricted, low-income? Sorry. Why did we settle at 20% low-income if we know that it's all going to be subsidized by your organization? Why didn't we go 100% deed-restricted, low-income housing?
I would have to check with the developers on that.
Okay. I'm just curious, because, you know, if, if you didn't add in the context of your organization subsidizing all the units regardless, and that we're just trying to add as many units as possible with as little low-income infusion into the, the project, and that makes sense why we settled at 20%? I'm just curious in terms of how the development came together that, and then building on top of that, you know, given that you could have applied for 100% concession, or 100%, you know, if, why didn't we go three stories, four stories to get as many units as possible for your organization? Since adjacent to your site, there are four or five-story multifamily developments. So it would be contextual rather than two stories, yeah.
I, I think in everything that Olive Crest attempts to do, we try and keep it as family-centered as possible. So doing more units didn't make sense. We know that we can meet a need that we have currently, right now, with that amount of units, and still keep a tight community with the folks that we're serving through that.
Okay, so it's more, more in your organization that the quantity of need is just at 15 units? That's all for me. Thanks, sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
I'm very familiar with Olive Crest, also with emancipated youth and transitional youth. I hired one, and she now has her own company. She was a very good, intelligent person, and I hired her on the spot. I had another transitional youth, and I couldn't understand why. I couldn't find him during the day, but I found him in our food bank up in one of the shelves somewhere, sleeping. And I didn't understand why. And that's because he skateboarded all the way from Santa Ana out to where our, 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 our facility was located. And that's the thing on the programmatic side. So I'm glad you are here to talk about programmatic side. I think what we need to address, and I'm going to put this over here, the good work you do and the population that you serve, and unfortunately, we have so many, and look at the physical planning side, which I guess the developer is doing that for you, right? So the questions that we ask are really appropriate to why the developer did the way that they did it so that it could get through the Planning Commission, right? To meet all those requirements. Does that make sense to you guys? That's, that's why I'm agonizing over it, because certain things then make sense after why you were doing it. But because there was not the profit motive put into it, because you're, you're, you're the end user, the income level is irrelevant, right, per, per the unit? Okay, so what we are only looking at is this very Spartan institutionalized kind of living facility, right? Okay, which is 15 units, right? That's all we're looking at. 15 youth will be accommodated. And is there anything wrong with that on the planning side? No, because I think you guys did your homework, right? That's what I'm assuming. And that a lot of things are not there because it's not needed, okay? So I'm beginning to solve my own problem as I looked through the plan, and it did not make sense until I heard you introduce. So I just want to make the statement, you know, thank you for the work you do and people that you serve. I, unless, man, I didn't find something specific. I don't, I, you know, I didn't find anything specifically to ask other than things that didn't make sense to me normally if, if a developer here talking about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing this project to us. I think this is a population that tends to get forgotten once they age out. So thank you for shining a light on them and, you know, giving them, giving them that second chance. Because, you know, kids are cuter when they're kids, not when they're, not when they're young adults. Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Scamia.
It was, and it was, again, just the, the comment earlier about maybe finding something. It's a very minor thing. It just, if you do have that Spanish style, like, your design is like, pretty much, like, 95% of the way there. It's just that sometimes I think doing that base that's kind of like a different type of stone veneer that kind of clashes with that style of architecture that you're utilizing. This is really more, you know, not a requirement, just like a thought, because sometimes you can get away with just having really nice ornamental lights or just little, like, pieces of tile, just like scattered throughout those large blank spaces. And it does give it a bit more of a homey feel, if that's the kind of feeling that you're going for. So just one of those little things.
You can take a seat, and we'll see if you have any additional comments or questions. Of course. Recording secretary, have we received any written communication? Or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Chair, we have received a total of one email in the form of public comments for this item before the 3:30 PM deadline, which has been distributed to the commission and posted online. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to go ahead and speak. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial 9 and then 6 to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds. Chair, we have one speaker.
Key Olivos, please approach the microphone.
Hi. Okay, so yes, I'm very aware of Olive Crest. As a matter of fact, I served on a foster agency for 12 years in the Orange County. So I'm very familiar with what this company, what this organization does, and kudos to all their work they've done for the community. My issue is, again, with the developer. I mean, if this is supposed to be for the TAY of foster children or young youth, why isn't it noted so in the, in the proposed project? If it's specifically for them, it should be noted and shared equally. It should be clearly stated that this building is only supposed to be used for TAY. And to your point, I don't know who made that up there, they're all below the low-income, every single one of them. I'm assuming it's going to be quite the task to go and get a job when you foster out. I know we encountered that problem. So when you, when you don't specifically say it, opens a little window for them to use it for whatever use they want it to. So I think that should be clarified. Also, did I understand correctly that... Also, did I understand correctly that the square footage is only 700 square feet? Is that per unit or is that per room? Because that's awfully a small area. I don't know, it's like they're trying to compact all these units into one little space. As for the parking, they should provide parking. Doesn't matter if it's electrical, doesn't matter if it's going to cost them additional funds. Olive Crest is a huge organization. I'm sure they can provide that. They don't want to provide it, I get it. But I really, I really have that parking issue. We want to encourage this young youth to be, get automobiles. And if the way the state goes now, there'll only be electrical vehicles in the near future. So I, I don't, I don't think that's a good excuse, that it's going to cost the developer more. Dish it out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers online?
No, Chair, no more additional speakers.
Would the applicant like to speak on the comments made? Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Would the Commission like to speak on any of the comments made, or are we ready for a vote? Is there a motion to approve this matter?
I'll motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Eskamia and a second from Commissioner Benninger. Secretary, please call for a real call vote.
Commissioner Benninger?
Hi.
Commissioner Eskamia?
Hi.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Fam?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Vice Chair Ramos? Chair Oliva?
Hi.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Leo and Vice Chair Ramos absent.
This is the time and place for zoning ordinance amendment number 2025-01, amending chapter 41, zoning of the Santa Ana Municipal Code, municipal code to regulate the establishment and operation of group homes in the city. Before we begin, do any Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Seeing none, Siri Champion will provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about this proposed amendment to the zoning code. As previously stated, item two pertains to a proposed group home zoning ordinance amendment number 2025-01, which would apply citywide. The zoning ordinance amendment would affect chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code to establish a regulatory framework for group homes. The framework will address the location, licensing, permitting, and operational requirements that apply. The proposed amendment also includes modifications to definitions to remove ambiguity between uses. Staff recommends that the that the Planning Commission advance a recommendation to the City Council to adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment number 2025-01, with the exception of section 28 of the draft ordinance, which pertains to chapter eight and is outside of the zoning code. Therefore, it's outside of the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, or outside of the purview of the Planning Commission. I know that this is a dense ordinance, and so I'm looking forward to answering the many questions that you may have. I'd like to begin the the content of the presentation by sharing with you more about group homes and what they mean. Group homes are residential dwellings being used as supportive living environments to individuals who are considered disabled under state law. And this is true for both a variety of physical, mental, emotional impairments, as well as those who are recovering from drugs and alcohol who live in sober living homes. Some group homes are licensed by the state and some are not. Generally, unlicensed facilities provide neither care nor supervision. Oops, my apologies. At its April 15, 2025, regular meeting, the City Council directed staff to draft an ordinance to establish local regulations for group homes as well as for sober living homes. The intent of the ordinance is to accomplish two goals. First, the city aims to preserve the residential character of residential neighborhoods. Second, to avoid institutionalization of disabled individuals by creating supportive environments in residential neighborhoods where they may use and enjoy their homes in a manner similar to ways that homes are enjoyed by non-disabled individuals. In addition to drafting an ordinance to regulate group homes and sober living facilities consistent with federal and state laws, the City Council directed staff to draft an ordinance modeled after Costa Mesa's ordinance because of its legal precedence. Costa Mesa's regulatory framework was tested in the courts through the Ohio House LLC versus City of Costa Mesa. The challenge against Costa Mesa's regulations alleged discrimination against individuals with disabilities. However, the United States Court of Appeals affirmed Costa Mesa's ordinance because the local zoning regulations benefited protected, a protected class. Through the decision, the courts established a net benefit standard for disabled individuals. In the case of group homes, the net benefit for disabled individuals contrasts to residents of boarding houses. While boarding houses are not permitted in the city, group homes are proposed to be permitted and regulated to protect normal residential surroundings. Having established the background for this ordinance, we will shift into the details. We've prepared a table that summarizes existing regulations as compared to proposed regulations. This table was also included in your agenda packet. The first slide covers both definitions and zoning districts. So first, addressing definitions. The proposed ordinance includes definitions for group homes as well as for sober living homes. Neither of these are currently defined. In addition, the proposed ordinance defines residential care facilities and adds and deletes other definitions to remove ambiguity. The proposed changes also address the zoning districts where the uses are permitted. The current zone or the current ordinance does not expressly list group homes as permitted uses. And this proposed ordinance would state that group homes with six or fewer occupants be permitted in all zones where single family is allowed, and that group homes with seven or more occupants would be permitted in three residential districts, as well as in specific developments and specific plans where multifamily dwellings are currently permitted. The second slide covers permit requirements and separation requirements. Because group homes are not expressly permitted in the current code, there are no permits required for them. The proposed ordinance includes permit requirements, which vary based on state licensing and size of the dwellings, or size of the number of occupants. Group homes that are licensed by the state with six or fewer occupants are exempt from permits. According to state law, these types of uses must be treated as single-family residences for zoning purposes. For group homes that are not licensed by the state with six or fewer occupants, the proposed ordinance would require a group home special use permit. For group homes, either licensed or unlicensed by the state with seven or more occupants, the proposed ordinance would require a conditional use permit as well as an operator's permit. With respect to the separation requirements, there are no current requirements in the code for these uses to be separated from one another. However, with the adoption of the ordinance, a 650-foot separation would be required between group homes, with the exception of group homes with six or fewer occupants in single-family zones. The proposed zoning ordinance also addresses sober living homes and occupancy limits. Sober living homes are a special type of group homes. They provide treatment services. Sober living homes that provide treatment services must be licensed by the state. Small licensed sober living homes are exempt from this ordinance. In contrast, unlicensed sober living homes do not provide treatment facilities, and they are intended to offer an environment where residents mutually support each other's recovery. Currently, the city has no standards applicable to sober living homes, and the proposed ordinance would establish standards for unlicensed sober living homes. Those standards are designed to create a safe, safe and healthy homes for residents, as well as to provide, as well as to preserve the character of residential neighborhoods through good neighbor policies. As discussed previously, group homes would be regulated by occupancy. While the existing zoning code has no limits on occupancy, the proposed ordinance distinguishes between sizes, as well as the zoning districts where different zoning, where different, where different uses and types of permits are based on small versus large homes. So let me say that again. For, the existing zoning code has no limits on occupancy. However, this code would distinguish between group homes that have six or fewer and seven or more occupants. Next, the zone will address owner-operator qualifications, existing homes, and how they must be permitted, as well as reasonable accommodations. To help minimize impacts to residential neighborhoods, the proposed ordinance would establish operator qualifications for both small and large group homes. With the passage of the group home ordinance, existing group homes would be required to apply for permits. Small group homes would be required to apply for a group home special use permit within 90 days of the effective date of the ordinance. And large group homes would be required to obtain an operator's permit within 120 days of the effective date and to obtain a conditional use permit. Lastly, the proposed ordinance would address reasonable accommodation, which is a modification or exception to standards and regulations that would eliminate barriers and provide a disabled individual with equal opportunity. The proposed zoning code amendment is consistent with the legally tested Costa Mesa ordinance. Key provisions in both ordinances include, first, preferential treatment for a protected class of disabled individuals. Both ordinances provide disabled individuals more opportunities to live in residential zones than non-disabled individuals living in similar living arrangements. Both the Costa Mesa ordinance and the city's proposed ordinance include definitions for group homes, sober livings, sober living homes, integral uses, and boarding houses. Special use permits are required for small, unlicensed group homes in Costa Mesa, and they would also be required based on the city's proposed ordinance. Costa Mesa requires a CUP for licensed and unlicensed group homes with seven or more occupants, and the proposed ordinance would do the same. Separation requirements of 650 feet between group homes are included in Costa Mesa's ordinance and as well as in the city's proposed ordinance. And lastly, both ordinances require a house manager, 48-hour notice prior to eviction, as well as additional requirements for sober living homes. The proposed ordinance is consistent with several policies in the general plan, including three found in the city's housing element. They are policy HE 2.5, facilitating diverse housing types, policy HE 4.3, supporting the development of permanent, affordable, and accessible housing for disabled people that enables them to live independent lives, and policy HE 4.7, providing tenant-based housing opportunities linked with substance abuse and other services for people experiencing homelessness. The proposed ordinance is also consistent with three policies in the land use element, including policy LU 1.1, fostering compatibility between uses to enhance livability and promote healthy lifestyles. Supporting diverse, sorry, land use policy, policy land use, sorry, policy LU 4.6, supporting diverse housing types that improve living conditions and promote a healthy environment, and policy LU 4.7, promoting mixed income developments with mixed housing types to create inclusive communities. Finally, the proposed ordinance is consistent with the community element, which includes a, which includes a policy for active living and well-being, such as continuing to support the creation of healthy neighborhoods. Staff have reviewed the proposed ordinance for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and has determined that the project is exempt from further review as detailed in multiple sections of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, because the project will not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. The project has no possibility that it will have a significant effect on the environment, and the project establishes administrative and land use oversight procedures for group homes within existing residential structures and will not expand the existing use. Finally, there is no direct fiscal impact associated with the passing of this ordinance. In closing, the Planning and Building Agency staff recommend that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation to the City Council to adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment number 2025-01 to amend several sections of chapter 41 of the Santa Ana Municipal Code as those sections relate to group homes and land use definitions. While ordinance amendment 2025-01 is also included in the ordinance, it is subject to separate City Council consideration and is not part of the Planning Commission's action. Please note, staff has received one letter of support for the zoning ordinance amendment, which has been distributed to you and is available to the public at the front dais. With that, I would like to say thank you again, and staff is available to answer your questions.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions? Does the Commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Benninger?
Yes. I'm very much support, because right now, we don't know where they are. We also say that a lot of them are operated very efficiently and very effectively and very healthfully. We just don't know where they're at. I'd like a little further explanation. You've mentioned that any that are six and have state approval, this ordinance will not, will not affect. Can you explain on that what the state does when they license one of these homes?
The state licenses group homes, the state licenses a variety of group homes. The state law says that for group homes that have six or fewer occupants, they must be treated like any other single-family residential use. And so the city is not able to apply any regulations to those.
But the city, they will have to identify themselves to the city?
There's no requirement that they identify themselves to the city.
Do we have a feeling what percentage that is?
We do, with the staff report includes numbers. Let me remind myself what those are.
If I could jump in, there's 24 licensed facilities currently in the city.
So it'll be 24, whatever the number we come up with? Because I don't think we know of all, all the licensed homes that exist right now, all the homes that exist, I should say.
So we do know the number of facilities that have licenses, and that's data that we can pull from the state, because they have state licenses. What we don't know are the number of homes that are unlicensed in the city. So we have an estimate of that, that's about 50. So 50, and that's just pulling different data sources. But again, because these are unlicensed facilities, we don't have an exact number.
Gotcha. And one concern in the neighborhoods is that how many are in a neighborhood? I couldn't tell you how many are in my neighborhood. I know we have one, at least, just because of the fact I've seen the folks. And again, they do provide a good service. I have to, you know, commend them on it. Not all, but most of them do a very good service. Thank you.
Commissioner Eskamia.
Yeah, so I guess with these, right now, is there an active business license requirement for these facilities? And do we have like a history of them actually complying? Or at this point, is is that just another kind of aspect where we would have unlicensed, oh my gosh, group homes along with unlicensed businesses in order to kind of give staff more tools to be able to proactively enforce? Is that essentially what we're seeing here?
Yes, and the businesses are required to obtain a business license, but they're required to obtain a business license to be able to rent the home, not necessarily for the facility itself. So that's kind of where there's a dearth of data, because they're getting a permit to be able to rent the home, not necessarily for the facility.
Okay, and then, I guess, just to- Okay, and then, um, I guess just a clarifying question on the numbers of occupants. So, um, the number six that we're looking at are six occupants that are utilizing the service plus the manager. So we still kind of end up with seven people on a site. And then presuming that that applies then for the other units as well, so seven plus will also then require a manager as well?
Correct. For six and fewer occupants, that's the occupants themselves. And then the house manager is required in addition to those six.
And with the legislation that Costa Mesa was undertaking, has it already gone through the full California appeals process? And we're completely done and now it's set to go?
Correct.
Okay. And there were a couple of other like changes as far as the lodging. Boarding room or boarding houses, lodging houses in that that's kind of included in here. So is that like also impacting just the ability to do boarding rooms as well? Cause that was something that I, I saw the changes in there, but I'm not sure like how that's maybe impacting things beyond these group home facilities. Just to either not allow or enable, um, kind of more congregate style housing in the future. So I just want to know how that might impact this particular, sorry. How this particular ordinance might also then have an ancillary impact on other types of housing.
So I'll start with an answer and turn it over to Ricardo if he has anything to add. Boarding houses with this ordinance would become defined as a use. And therefore, uh, regulated in, in comparison to group homes. The state or the, the decision that was made by the courts is that there has to be a net benefit provided to disabled individuals. And currently boarding houses are not permitted and they will not be permitted with this passage of this ordinance. So the net benefit to the disabled individuals is that they have the opportunity not afforded to others. To live in this similar type of setting as a regular residential home.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. And then with a special use permit, um, I'm just trying to like, if we can get some clarification as to what that process and procedure is looking like? Is that already established? Is it just kind of a regular LUC procedure? Like what's the procedure that would be implemented for the special use permit?
A group home special use permit would go through a slightly different process. So it's subject to the approval by the executive director. There is a noticing requirement and there is a public hearing.
Um, and as far as I guess existing group homes that are out there that now would have no license, that don't have any sort of. Government permit from the state or anywhere else. Do we have provisions either set in place or considerations for how we're going to handle? When two applicants come in on the same day that are right next to each other, trying to get a permit and who gets priority? Cause again, just thinking that through, um, you know, what, what does that process look like? Cause obviously they're not grandfathered in because there is no actual license or permit given to them. So what is our likely kind of strategy moving forward with that sort of scenario?
Thank you for that question. The simple answer is that we operate first come, first served. And the reality is that one person comes to the counter and then the next person comes to the counter. If there happen to be two people at the counter that approach staff at the same time. Then we could run into an issue of figuring out who was the first one there.
Okay, so I guess, um, this would be a notice to all people operating these facilities that first come, first serve, starting on a particular date and time. I imagine there will be a rush that first day, um, so I guess get prepped for that. Okay.
Commissioner Pham.
If, um, if there are unlicensed or if there are existing, um, group homes or sober living homes that are operating. And with, after 90 days that this goes into effect, they do not comply. Uh, what's the repercussion from the city? Is it code violation citation? Uh, what is it?
If I might repeat the question back to you, because I couldn't hear you all the way. I believe that you're asking what happens with an existing use that does not obtain the required permits.
Right.
That would become a code enforcement case.
Okay. And, um, I, I think, um, the point of. These homes aren't subject to a noticing or a public noticing if there's six occupants or less. Would we run into issues kind of not, not in terms of who comes to the counter first? But they do not know that there are presence of other group homes existing. And so, and so there'd be multiple homes that falls within the 350 feet radius.
First of all, to clarify, unlicensed group homes, sorry, licensed group homes by the state. With six or fewer residents are not required to get a special use permit. However, group homes that are unlicensed by the state and have six or fewer residents. Are required to get a group home special use permit. And then beyond that, the seven or more, as we said earlier, requires an conditional use permit. In terms of timing, I didn't hear your full question.
Uh, I guess my question is regardless of the occupant load, six or six or above. You mentioned that there was a radius. That if there is an existing home that is either six or above or six or below. Another group home wouldn't be allowed to exist within that radius. Is that correct?
Correct.
Regardless of licensed or unlicensed.
Unless it's, unless it's licensed by the state.
Okay, so if it's licensed by the state, then it could be five group homes in the same neighborhood adjacent to each other. Regardless if they're in close proximity to each other, as long as they're licensed by the state.
Correct. We're unable to regulate them because the state law says that we must treat them like any other single-family home.
And then, um, are we defining single-family home as a single-family home with a, with a, with its own parcel? Or are we defining single-family home as a townhouse? A, a single-family home on a lot, a single-family home? You know, what, what was being defined as a single-family home?
A single-family, well. They must be treated as a single-family residence in a single-family residential neighborhood. A, so a group home may also occupy a townhome. Or an individual unit within an apartment building, if I'm not mistaken. And I'll look to Ricardo for help on that one.
That's right. There's no limit on the, the building type. But what we're talking about is a single-family home, which is our single-family use, I should say, which is defined use in the San Antonio municipal. Municipal code currently that this ordinance would not affect. So there's currently a definition for that that would not be impacted by this proposed ordinance.
Can I just clarify, um, this might help. Under state law, what it says is that you have to treat them as a residential use of property. So whether it's single-family or multifamily, the, the point is residential use of property. We have further definitions of single-family, multifamily, but ultimately you just can't then treat, you can't treat them differently than any other home. What a residential type, whichever it may be.
Can't use warehouse.
Yep. And so the, the six, the six occupant load, that's from the state, that's not us, right? We're not, um, capping it at six or below or six and above. The number six is from the state.
Correct.
And, um, well, my, my main concern is that. You know, it, it seems very broad. A 500 square foot home or a nine square foot home or, or 1200 square foot home, 2000 square foot home. And there doesn't seem to be a ratio in which, uh, we are kind of, um. Evaluating whether or not these homes are suitable for six occupants. Right? It's my, my, my concern is if, if someone's renting out a, uh, existing 900 square foot home. With two bedroom, one bath. And we are essentially saying you're allowed to have six occupants within that home. You know, we're not talking about the parking inundation, just parking that, we're just talking about the life and safety aspect of it. Is there any language or there's any distinction between kind of the, the ratio of square footage versus the occupant?
Yeah, thanks, commissioner. You know, staff shares your, your concerns with that too, not just on this type of use, but in any use, right? Health and safety and residential overcrowding or topics that we hear all the time in this community. But at the same time, that number six, as you've kind of been alluding to, that is a number basically chosen and handed down from the state. To local jurisdictions when it comes to this distinction. So yes, um, you know, in some hypothetical situation, a 900 square foot unit could be occupied by six people. The same way a 2000 square foot unit could be occupied by six people. But as you're aware, as an architect as well, there are other limitations that go into play. Like minimum bedroom size, egress windows. Um, and similar features that normally dictate how many people and how many bedrooms one can fit in a unit. So, um, a 900 square foot unit with 70 square foot bedrooms and enough egress windows, you know, maybe. But in other cases, likely not. But unfortunately or fortunately, when it comes to that number six, that is a number that is outside the city's control. Which in many ways makes ordinance adoption a lot easier in this avenue, right? Cause it's not something that requires an evaluative process or sort of like weigh in by a decision-making body. But at the same time, it's kind of like a number that, um, one must simply live with when we make those distinctions between what's. Operating as a single-family home versus something that's larger.
And so I'm assuming since we're looking at it as a single-family home. We won't require, because you know, the, the language of, um. People with disability or people that, um, you know, equal rights in the language. Um, but then also we're phrasing as single-family homes, I'm assuming there's no requirement for ADA upgrades or accessibility. It's just more of. Six, six people within the home. Uh, as long as that home does not have any pending code violation, that home is, is able to be used as a, as a sober living or a group home. Is that my understanding? Yeah. But that's all from me. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
The community has been asking for this for a long time. And I'm pretty sure you guys, uh, have received most of the complaints about it. But, uh, let me see if I understand and kind of structure a little what I think I heard here. One is that you're providing some consistency licensing. If they have an existing state license, uh, then, uh, they follow the rules for that. If they're not, they have to apply for it. Number two, you're setting up standards and requirements. Defining the group home, sober living, et cetera, et cetera, different categories. The one question I do have is that the, not, not the one question, but along that line. I think you made a statement to Commissioner Baowen about, um. The board, boarding houses are no longer, uh, allowed.
Boarding houses would not be allowed, um, through this ordinance. Having said that, they're currently not allowed. So there would be no change when it comes to boarding houses.
Oh, wow. There, there is a need for, um, single occupancy by working men. You know, cause there's hotels, I mean motels and things don't, don't work. So, uh, if a family member may have an extra room, they, they could still rent that room, couldn't they? And if the homeowner provides food, say there are two or three men like that. It, that constitute a boarding house and now that's illegal?
You're, you're saying if a family occupied a home and they leased a room. To another person outside of the family and provided meals to them, would that be considered a boarding house?
Yeah, they all work, uh, and part of it is they, they, they expanded their house to, to the story house. And they have some extra room and they rented it out to some working men. I would consider that a boarding house, but I'm, I'm kind of worried now that boarding houses are not allowed, you know?
Correct.
As housing option in the city.
That would be considered a boarding house. And it's true that currently they're not permitted and they would not be permitted the way the ordinance is drafted.
However, if they become a group home and licensed, then they can, right?
Yes, if they had, if there were disabled, disabled individuals living in their group home. Uh, and it was licensed by the state, then yes, that would be permitted.
So what we have here is licensing, uh, standards, requirement. And, uh, by the way, going through your licensing part, your staff really grills you. And, and they go through your application. So I know that there's some enforcement going on there as you apply to make sure that we have some consistency. So that's the portal for the enforcement. But actually later on, after they got their license and they may operate, who does the enforcement?
After, so after a unlicensed group home is opened. Whether it be six or fewer, seven or more, it would be, uh, enforced by the city.
That's, that's the initial expectation for a new license, right? What about, uh, like they've been around for a while and they're operating now? Who expects them on a regular basis to see if they're still in compliance?
So, um. This is complex, so let me break it down. If it's state licensed, we don't need to see you for anything in planning and building. You just go to the business license counter as the property owner and get a business license to rent out your house. If you're renting it out, right? If you're owner-operator, have fun with state licensing. The reason for that is that, great, an outside agency is regulating you and inspecting you, licensing you. That's the best case scenario any city would want, right? It's their enforcement staff, it's their licenser staff, no drain on local resources. If it's not licensed by the state and now you're subject to this ordinance that our case planner has just described. Then you would be subject to going through the planning and code enforcement process. So, um, I do want to just build on that very quickly. That planning has worked diligently with other departments on crafting this ordinance, as with any ordinance. But some ordinances are more effectively administered and implemented by another department other than planning. And modeling on the city's success with the commercial cannabis regulations being administered by our code enforcement division. This is similarly natured. Our code enforcement division staff have ample experience with reviewing applications. Even conducting background checks on cannabis business owners. Not to equate this to like a, you know, a substance, but the skillset is very similar in that sort of inspections. Routine monitoring and annual check-ins as well. So I want the commission and specifically Commissioner Wu to, to have that takeaway to your question of who's monitoring, who's inspecting this? It's the city if you're not state licensed and specifically it's the code enforcement division.
And I recognize that we have a different city than in the past, but I want to bring the example from the past. When the rescue mission was moved from the downtown area into the southwest neighborhood. It's now the city yard, but prior to that, they had their sober living facility. A lot of promises were made. The promise was if anyone leave the facility, they got to check out. And if they're wandering in the neighborhood, they will go around and pick them up. They won't have the windows open. And, and what we saw was people, uh, the window was open, the feet was hanging out. We find liquor bottles all over the place and, and that neighborhood was on the operating on for about two decades. You know, uh, because again, we, we came to the city and then we try to find some accountability there. Now, what I like about this is we're trying to put some structure and ability. And that's why I'm, I'm looking at the different departments and things. And that was a good answer. I suspected that, but I wanted to hear that. The different people would be looking at different aspects of that. So that means that when, uh, we see something in the community, we can report it somewhere. That then follow up to see if, if the guidelines are being met, they got a license and all that, right?
That's correct. And recognizing the growing regulatory complexity of land use in California. Thanks to the city councils, uh, council's decisions and leadership in this last budget cycle. The code enforcement division will also have four new code enforcement officers added to it. So that's recognizing the growth of various land use types that require this sort of routine check-ins. And monitoring instead of just permitting and waiting for a complaint to come in.
But prior to this, if we didn't have this, we're all over the place. Everyone would give you a different answer and all that. Now we could say, you need a license, right? Are you this? Are you that? Or are you this? Right? What category are you? Okay. Now, do you have a, a residential manager? Do you have this? Do you have that? You can go down the line, right? And at the desk, they'll tell them that, cause you probably have a little sheet, right? So it will become clear because we now have, if, if we pass this today, right? And it goes to the city council and they pass it, we'll have a structure in terms of licensing. Enforcement and standards for everyone to follow. My, my, again, my concern is what to do with the. My, my, again, my concern is what to do with these, uh, because we are a working class community with with people who work. And uh, although sometime, you know, like any other uh homeowner, you you kind of worry about uh, people coming in a house and all the cars. But sometime you see that, you know, you get to know the people and you sign that they're, they're working. The reason they're smoking in their cars is not allowed to be smoking in the house and they're smoking cigarettes, not anything else. So uh, those kind of thing, I guess, will need to be worked out in the future to kind of further define group home versus boarding houses and all that. And the reason why boarding house, just out of sensitivity, is that uh, you, you do have San Diego resident homeowner that needs extra income. And and so, you know, um, they rent out to someone they knew from their old village or or or, you know, a friend or relatives or a coworker or something. So um, I, I don't know, but you have a framework for sorting that out, right?
This ordinance is what I would consider to be an exceptional first step towards establishing that regulatory framework. And as you've pointed out, Commissioner, right now it's a toolset, it's a toolbox that's missing tools. It's, there's no, there's nothing in it for enforcement. There's very antiquated definitions. Very, very absent and notably absent definitions, regulations, permit requirements. Uh, despite the evolving landscape of our community. So this is a step towards um, you know, definitions that are clear and vetted by multiple jurisdictions. And setting up a permitting and inspections and annual sort of check in process that balances the needs of individuals living with different disabilities or also group living.
And by having that, you're not inconsistent and you're not uh, uh, penalizing a particular class.
Correct.
Right. So we'll start here is what you're saying and as things emerge out from community, we will, we will refine it. It's not an end, end of the road.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you for bringing this ordinance to the planning commission. I think as we've seen with um, with with the city's municipal code, like it's, it's not one and done. And that's why we have the amendments, that's why we have ordinances and we're constantly fixing where we see areas we need to fix. I had no idea that we didn't have language for group homes and for sober living um, um, for sober living houses. So um, when reviewing the agenda, I was, I was actually really surprised because um, in my neighborhood, I know that there, there are these homes. So knowing that there was no structure for what these homes are or how they're supposed to function, how permits work. It was uh semi alarming, but knowing that we're attempting to put a structure, have some sort of framework that we can work off of and see if it works and, you know, to an extent, see how it goes. If these definitions work for us, they work for us. And if not, we come with additional amendments at a later time. So I appreciate the questions that my colleagues asked because um, there were clarifying questions that I had that I no longer have for staff. I will ask one additional time if uh, any commissioners have any additional questions for staff, Commissioner Benninger.
Just out of curiosity, what triggers someone to get a state license?
The trigger for getting a state license.
Yes.
Depends on a variety of factors and I admit that it's complicated. And so I can't quote, you know, the exact circumstances in all cases, but generally speaking, a license is required for a group home that's providing supportive care or providing care and support to individuals with disabilities.
Would anyone, where would Alzheimer's or anyone with dementia, where would they fit in this structure?
They would fall under group home living, yes.
Okay, alright. By passing this ordinance, are we going to force more people to go for the state license rather than ours?
I, I, no, I don't believe that would be the case because where a state license is required, a state license is required. Where a city license or permits, excuse me, permits are required, they are required.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, just one, one additional question.
Commissioner Fam.
Uh, in the context of a single family lot that has a single family home as well as an ADU. Are we addressing or are we applying this ordinance on an APN uh basis or on an address basis? Where there could be, you know, you know, maybe an operator won't apply for six and above. But they apply for two, six and below because there's two residential unit within that, that lot, which then exempt them from a CUP. Uh, is, is, is there a definition in which we evaluate that circumstance?
Yes, there is a requirement in the code that there be um. If there's an ADU, that was the first case that you, example that you provided. If there's an ADU, the ADU must be used along with the primary residents as the sober living facility or the group home. They cannot be separated into two and it's based on the property and not the individual addresses.
So it would be um, six individual plus one uh case manager. It wouldn't be two case manager and twelve individuals. That does.
Correct.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Benninger.
This is getting interesting because in my neighborhood, I have a house that a doctor owns. He put his parents into the home, house. He's run out two of the rooms to individuals. Now he's added an AUD unit, which he's running out. Are they going to be affected by having a requirement? Because in a way, they have uh three additional people living there. Um, how's that fit into the picture?
ADUs are allowed to be rented separately. Individual rooms in a home. If there's a relationship and they're operating as a single unit, there is no need for additional permits. But if they are renting them out to individuals that are, have no ties to the family that's living there, they would be considered a boarding house and not be allowed.
Interesting. Because I know in this case, there's no connection.
I did have one additional question. Well, is there any language for um, how many, how many permits will be allowed per individual, business owner or business entity?
Meaning across the city. So if one individual owns five properties distributed all across the city, um, they could get a permit for each of those. There's no limit on how many permits they could get.
Thank you for clarifying. If there are no additional questions, the public hearing is now open. Recording secretary, have you received any written communication? Or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Chair, we have received a total of one email in the form of public comments for this item before the three thirty PM deadline, which has been distributed to the commission and posted online. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon to indicate that you're, that you would like to speak. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial nine and then six to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds. Chair, we do have one speaker. She's currently on Zoom.
Jennifer Lee, please unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, I have a question more than a comment. I, I'm, I'm so happy to hear that there are, the ordinance is, is new and kind of better describes how to navigate um, group living. My question relies on, you know, special use versus conditional use permit. I'm aware that there are opportunity zones within Santa Ana in which we're trying to investigate or establish good sounding, you know, investors to come in and, you know, bring the city up. And so I'm, I'm just wondering in terms of the differences between the special use versus the conditional use permit and the process for the conditional use, because I think you already expressed the special use permit earlier.
So for the public and the commission's benefit, this is a time to receive comments. If a question is posed, it's taken as a comment. And then if the commission desires to have staff answer it, then staff can answer the question after the public hearing is closed.
Do we have any other comments or questions?
Chair, no, we don't have any more speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Would the commissioners like that question or comment to be answered by city staff?
Yeah, I guess I'll, well, I was gonna make a more general comment, not to the public commenter's comment. But I, I guess, uh, the, the only thing I, I worry about here with this one is I, I do think that boarding rooms and boarding houses are a viable type of housing in the appropriate context. So the only thing I really worry about is that that section of the code will be totally struck. So we'll kind of forget about this definition if you're looking at the code like, you know, a year from now when it's no longer there. Uh, though I know we can always go back and take a look at the previous definition. So I, I do think that as we look at the zoning code update, uh, that there might be some appropriate locations. Uh, where boarding houses and that type of um, kind of really closer to a single room occupancy type, type of living uh, might be appropriate in certain downtown districts like we used to have. It is a form of housing that typically is less expensive than other forms of housing. And I wouldn't necessarily totally rule it out. I know that's not the intent of this particular ordinance, but and that they're not even allowed currently, but it is just something that uh, once it's gone from the code, I'm always wondering if it'll ever come back. That's, that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. I was just going to add that currently underway, we have the comprehensive zoning code update. So that's another opportunity to address the use and the context which it would be appropriate in the city.
I, I'm just gonna add that uh, I think in the city, there's a lot of places where there is a single room rental taking place. Especially people my age that suddenly have an extra room or two. And so I, I think uh, knowing that that right now is barred by our present laws. It's kind of interesting because I wouldn't expect that to be so, but I'm sure it exists in the city.
Commissioner Wu.
Consistent with the other comment, I think we do need to look at, since this is a working class and many of our workers do not work at a level that uh, provides a adequate um, salary to, to um, be totally independent, that something in consideration in the future. We, we might need to look at this in, in term of addressing it. Not special housing, but you know, how, how do we define the ability to, to uh, rent out to people? Because if we don't, the, the opposite will happen. They will become homeless. And we'll see an increase in term of homeless people that used to be functioning, living in a place. And this I see in terms of seniors or someone that loses, loses a roommate. And, and the uh, the youth that are transitioning off of foster care and et cetera, you know. Those are the ones I'm starting to see out in the street because of the way our economy has been driven, uh, driving these days.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this matter?
I, I so move.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Benninger and a second by Commissioner Wu. Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Benninger.
Aye.
Commissioner Scamilla.
Aye.
Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Fam.
Aye.
Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ramos. Chair Oliva.
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Leo and Vice Chair Ramos absent.
Thank you. I'll pose um, a recess to my colleagues. Would you all like to take a twenty minute recess or should we continue into the, into the work study session?
I don't know if twenty minutes is a lot. Um, is fifteen okay? I, or is, how much is, how much do we need?
We usually do fifteen and it goes on.
And it goes on to twenty?
That's why I offered.
Okay, yeah, you're, you're probably right, yeah.
To stay on track.
We'll put a timer.
We'll put a timer. We'll be back at seven forty-four, uh, seven forty-two, my bad.
Chair, the meeting is now being recorded.
Thank you. Before we jump into the work study session, we're going to open public comments again. We did have a few comments and we do have our speakers here. So we're gonna go back to um, public comments and we're going to have these folks come up for us. If I can have Alex Zamora and John Tafoya approach the microphone and we'll have y'all give us your public comments. Thank you for joining us.
No, just because I, I wasn't sure the name, but it'll work. I'm already here.
You can just say your name.
Right. Alright, good evening, everybody. My name is John Tafoya. I'm a representative with the Western States Carpenter's Union. I just want to briefly uh, share that communications are going with the developer are progressing in a positive and constructive direction. Both sides are working collaboratively to ensure the project aligns with the community's values and plan, and planning objectives. Uh, while there are still some details to finalize, we're encouraged by the open dialogue and mutual commitment to a successful outcome. Um, we will continue to update as things move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Alex Zamora. Very proud member of Launa Labor's International Union of North America, Labor's Local six five two here in beautiful Santa Ana. I'm a homeowner here. My parents are homeowners. Mostly all of my family are homeowners, over forty years invested in the city. Like I said, our local union hall is right here in the dead center of, of the city, very involved in the community. Um, our biggest concern always is safety. Um, reliable, responsible builders. Um, and that's what we provide, you know, we're not just here speaking in uh, support of the project, but we're also speaking in support of the developer, you know, partnering with uh, union trades is a very, very responsible thing. They're not committed to low wages and trying to get by, you know, with the skin of their teeth, but they're down to, to pay the money for good quality union labor. Um, with workers that are trained in state accredited training facilities that ensures just like the highest level of, of safety and uh, and it's really good for the city. You know, I hope we can get this uh process going quickly. I know this is just a work session, but I'm very, very glad to be able to, to speak tonight. And I hope uh, this goes very positive. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers online?
Chair, we do not have any more speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. That concludes the business calendar. Moving on to the work study session. Case Planner Jerry Guevara will now provide a presentation for the village specific plan.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Um, as mentioned, this next item is a work study session on the Village Santa Ana specific plan. Um, tonight's presentation will include an overview on the purpose of tonight's work study session. Uh, we will also discuss project discussion, including project description, background vision, guiding principles, development plan, community engagement, environmental review, consistency with the general plan, as well as next steps of the project. And we will conclude with um, commission questions at the end. I would try to keep this as short as I can for you all. Alright, the purpose of tonight's work study session is to provide the planning commission and the community the opportunity to preview the project prior to any public hearings uh, being scheduled, which are tentatively scheduled for the um, latter end of this year. It allows the planning commission to ask questions and provide. It allows the planning commission to ask questions and provide high-level comments on the project. No deliberation or action will be taken tonight. Comments may be made on the work-study session via general public comments, which were taken earlier today. Project description, the applicant, which is the Seagull Storm family, is seeking approval of a specific plan, a tentative track map, a development agreement, and certification of a supplemental environmental impact report in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act in order to facilitate the redevelopment of a 17-acre site into a mixed-use development to be known as the Village Santa Ana. Similar entitlements as approved by, for related Bristol-specific plans are being requested by this applicant. More specifically, the project would allow for the construction of up to 1,583 residential units, up to 80,000 square feet of commercial space, up to 30,000 square feet of office space, approximately 13.8 acres of public and private outdoor and recreation space, and approximately 3,500, 437 onsite parking spaces. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Sunflower Avenue and Bear Street as highlighted in yellow in the aerial map being displayed. Surrounding properties include South Coast Plaza in the city of Costa Mesa to the south, multifamily communities of Versailles on the lake and St. Albans to the north, related Bristol to the east, and the Village Creek community in the city of Costa Mesa to the west. The project is currently developed with the South Coast Plaza Village Commercial Center that includes a Regency Theater, Morton Steakhouse, Corner Bakery, Antonello, and other restaurant and commercial tenant spaces. The Seagull Storm family owns the project site and has a longstanding presence in Santa Ana and the county since the 1890s. The family initially was known for growing lima beans and raising cattle, and then shifted into transforming agricultural fields into commercial centers like the subject site and South Coast Plaza to the north of the project site. In 1973, the project site was developed with the current development. Moving on to the vision of the project. The vision of the project is to create a village consistent with the general plan that fosters a neighborly environment where residents can live, work, and recreate in a vibrant community, transform a conventional auto-oriented shopping plaza into a dynamic node of activity that blends healthy living, working, shopping, dining, captures Orange County's indoor/outdoor lifestyles through attention to detail and design of buildings, selection of materials, and infusion of nature in outdoor spaces, builds on the foundation of the area through new experiences in food, fitness, and artisan retail, complements the success of South Coast Metro area with a diversity of new housing in a jobs-rich environment, and one that attracts the innovative and startup culture of Orange County and provides thoughtfully designed spaces to create and showcase new offerings. Moving on to the guiding principles, the site plant, mix of uses, architectural design and landscape concepts, and development regulations proposed by the project have been created based on the following seven guiding principles. If creating a urban village community that creates an intimate and relaxing environment, provide warm, timeless, and iconic architecture that works holistically with the landscaping and the village atmosphere, provide diversity of outdoor spaces and activities at multiple levels that allow for strolling, reading, dining, meeting friends, exercising, and playing. Go four intends to provide an extension of the arts that will allow for art walks and showcasing of artwork in the form of landscaping, standalone art pieces, and local artisan retail. Go five provide an active streets by oriented buildings towards the, towards the street and retail, hands landscaping, multi-model streets. Go six provides sustainable foundation by reducing water and energy usage. And lastly, go seven, provide a balance of land uses that serves the needs of the local and regional community. Now we're gonna dive into the actual proposed plan. This is a proposed grounds-level site plant of the project. The project would allow both horizontal and vertical mixed uses across the site and mixed-use residential-only and commercial-only buildings. The focal point of this layout is the approximately 7.5 acres of publicly accessible open space and the central commercial area that has been designed to accommodate a variety of commercial uses, such as restaurants, markets, and other retail uses, with additional commercials uses extending throughout the ground floor of adjacent buildings, similar to that of the growth in Los Angeles, as well as the Americana in Glendale. Building heights will range from one story to 25 stories with reduction in height and upper-story step acts to buildings adjacent to the communities of Versailles on the lake and St. Albans. Parking will be provided through a combination of underground parking, above-grade structure parking, and on-street parking. Moving on to the conceptual rooftop level plan. This was provided in order to highlight the approximately 6.3 acres of private open space that the project would provide through outdoor balconies, patios, rooftop decks, as well as indoor spaces. Moving on to the publicly accessible open space map. This particular map has been designed, or the project has been designed as a, to incorporate open space as a critical place-making feature of the project. A promenade has been included along Sunflower Avenue to draw pedestrians from the residential area to the village square. The village square at the center of the commercial area has been designed to provide a hub for public gatherings and can be programmed for large-scale events such as a farmer's market or outdoor movie nights. Garden passels and strolls are placed throughout the development to allow for passive recreation. A fitness loop also encircles the side and a pocket park will be provided along South Plaza Drive to the north. Moving on to the proposed circulation. The project would include a pedestrian network that would allow residents, workers, and visitors to circulate from one space to another throughout the development with connections to the related Bristol site as well. The project would also include a bicycle network, which would include a Class IV cycle track along Sunflower Avenue, a Class 1 bike path along Bear Street with bicycle parking being provided throughout the site. The project will include new internal private streets and improvement to Bear Street, Sunflower Avenue, Plaza Drive, consisting of sidewalk improvements, repavement, and new landscaping and new mediums. Two new traffic signals will be installed along Plaza Drive and Bear Street. Other improvements also are proposed to the city's water and sewer infrastructure. As mentioned, the project would include approximately 3,437 onsite parking spaces throughout underground parking, above-grades parking structure, and on-street parking. The applicant is requesting a rate of 1.4 parking spaces per residential unit, four parking spaces per commercial square footage, and three parking spaces per office square footage. This is consistent with recently approved developments like the row, as well as the related Bristol-specific plant. Staff is also requesting preparation of a traffic and parking management plan that the applicant is currently preparing and finalizing in order to address any measures to mitigate any parking issues should any arise in the future. All right, this is a rendering, conceptual rendering of the project from Sunflower Avenue and Plaza Drive looking north. This next rendering is also a perspective from Sunflower Avenue and Plaza Drive looking north, but with a little bit more view for the eastern portion of the development. This next rendering is a project route from Sunflower Avenue, kind of looking towards the commercial core that the applicant is proposing. And as you can see, it does kind of highlight the different multi-model transportation that the project is proposing. This next rendering is a perspective from the central connector road that's being proposed. So kind of more or less in the middle of the development, you, you get towards the, the end of the commercial core. In terms of phasing, the project is anticipated to be constructed in five phases with an anticipating construction timeframe in 2026. Obviously, that date can change, but right now the applicant is targeting 2026. And these five phases will be constructed through a 20-year time, time period. Phase one, which is highlighted in orange, would include construction of 360 residential units and 73,000 square feet of commercial. Phase two will include 513 residential units. Phase three would include 177 residential units. Phase four will include 264 residential units and 300,000 square foot of office and the remaining commercial square footage. And lastly, phase five will consist of 269, 269 residential units. If approved, each subsequent development within the specific plan area will be subject to administrative review similar to what takes place currently at Main Place Mall and what was approved by the Bristol-related specific plan. Moving on to public input and engagement. The project included various input by the community and those feedbacks were incorporated and into the design that you see today. In accordance with the city's Sunshine Ordnance, the applicant conducted two Sunshine Ordnance meetings, one held on August 23rd, 2023, and the other one in November 8th, 2023. In addition, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a scoping meeting was held on November 15th, 2023. The community will also have additional opportunities to provide their input through this process as well as the, any of the upcoming planning commission, city council meetings, which again have been tentatively scheduled for August and September. In addition, the applicant has held over 150 community meetings, including attending and presenting a neighborhood association meeting, small group meetings, and answering phone calls and emails and other correspondences. The applicant also has a dedicated community liaison for this project and maintains a project website that is up to date with project descriptions. And they have continued to meet themselves available for any feedback from the community. All right, these are just some images, pictures from the two Sunshine Ordnance meetings that were conducted in 2023 at the West and South Coast Plaza with approximately about 230 people in attendance. During these community meetings, these were kind of the, the topics of discussions that were kind of highlighted by the community members with traffic and parking being the top concerns or the top topics that people had questions on. Since 2023 and following these community meetings, staff has worked with the applicant to address these community input. In terms of environmental review, the project has prepared a supplemental environmental impact report in accordance with the California Environmental Impact Quality Act. And the public draft was released for public review and comment on April 17th, 2025 of this year and ended on June 9th. The draft EIR examined potential of proposed project to generate impacts relating to the following environmental topics: air quality, cultural resources, energy, geology, and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazardous and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, noise, population, housing, public services and recreation, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and utilities and services systems. The environmental impact report has concluded the majority of these topics will not have a direct impact to the environment, with some of them being able to be mitigated through mitigation measures, with the exception of recreations. That is the only topic that cannot be mitigated. In terms of consistency with the general plan, as a reminder, the Golden City Beyond Santa Ana general plan update was adopted in 2022, which set forth the city's long-range planning policies that reflects the community aspirations and values through 2045. The general plan update highlighted five focus areas for future growth, one being the South Bristol focus area in which this site is located in. The South Bristol Street focus area represents Santa Ana's southern gateway and visions opportunities to transform audio-oriented shopping plazas to walkable, bike-friendly, and transit-friendly urban villages that incorporate a mix of high-intensity office and residential uses, as well as commercial uses. It, it also allows a maximum floor-air ratio of five with up to 125 dwelling units per acre and a maximum building height of 25 stories. These are just some images of the, images from the general plan to kind of help you visualize what the general plan envisioned for this area. In terms of consistency with the, with the general plan, this project is consistent with the land use element. The project is proposing approximately about 93 dwelling units per acre versus the 125 dwelling unit acres that the general plan allows for. In terms of floor-air ratio, the project is coming at about a floor-air ratio of three. Again, the general plan allows for five. And the specific plan is designed in a way to allow for a maximum building height of 25 stories, which again is consistent with the general plan. Obviously, not all these buildings are gonna be 25 stories in height. We are just creating the, the framework to be able to allow for that in the event there's a market and the applicant wishes to move forward with that. In terms of next steps, applicant as well as staff will consider any questions posed by the, the planning commission today and will address those comments. The specific plan is still being finalized, as well as other supporting technical documents. We will also be finalizing and providing response to comments on the environmental impact report and finalize that before we bring that forward to any, any public hearings. In terms of public hearings, we are tentatively scheduled to have this item before you as a public hearing in August 11th. Depending on the outcome of that meeting, we anticipate moving forward with council hearings for September 16th and on. That concludes staff presentations. We try to keep it briefly, but I'm here to answer any of your questions. We also have staff members from our own city staff from Public Works, as well as the applicant and their team. We also have our consultant available via Zoom as well.
Thank you. This is a study session, but if the, if the commissioners have any questions, I will open up to the commissioners. Commissioner Benninger?
First of all, it's closed. I needed to disclose it's closed. I do have my expat form here filled out. I did meet with the Seagull Storm family on May 22nd and to talk about this project. And you know, Alan sold his breath over there. Thank you, Alan. And I also got to go through the family farmhouse, which someone from Midwest liked me. That was very, I very much enjoyed that. And one interesting thing I'm just gonna pass on, the reason why the Seagull Storm family landed here is really because of the water table. And the lima beans, you only have to flood, or if it's a good winter, you don't have to. But the lima beans will find the water table. And so you don't have to water the plants just, just once. And it's, I saw, I found that was fantastic. But getting back to this project, it's quite a question for the city. The environmental impacts studies show zero effect or impact by the traffic this is gonna generate. And the key to that is the two lights that are gonna be added down Bear Street. Will we as a city synchronize those lights so a person doesn't get stopped three times going down the street?
Commissioner Benninger, yes, those will be synchronized.
Okay. Good. That's all I have right now.
Commissioner Scamilla?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you to staff. So I guess for me, the general worry or concern just with the overall site is just if we are kind of widening the drive a little bit more. So I know right now, I think it's a four-lane with some right-hand turns, mostly kind of towards the southern area closer to Costa Mesa. So if there are considerations for widening, it looks like we're adding an additional right-hand turn lane and/or a left-hand turn lane. I'm not sure if it's just a reconfiguration of the existing roadway width. But as far as, you know, the idea of creating a walkable urban neighborhood and environment, I would like say that anything we can do to kind of narrow the roadways, and I do see this as a street rather than a road, at least the drive portion. So we were really kind of emphasizing pedestrian and, you know, it's a place of access, not a place to drive through. So I guess that's. So I guess that's where I'm just looking at that one. Definitely Sunflower is more of a roadway, just kind of getting cars and traffic to circulate in a wider regional, for wider regional traffic patterns. But I do worry that if we do require an additional right-hand turn lane or any form of widening, it does actually remove usable, buildable space or open alternatively or open space in service of additionally wide roads. So I would just worry about that a little bit, not sure exactly what's going on there. And if we are then also doing the on-street cycleway on Sunflower, that exposure to high-speed traffic is going to probably lessen the amount of people that actually end up using it. So I know with its unprotected lane, or even if it is a protected lane with high-volume, high-speed traffic, just like we see along Bristol, you know, there's going to be a lot less people that feel safe utilizing that particular infrastructure. And then along the drive itself, if there is any way to kind of invert any, oh my gosh, bicycle infrastructure so that it's protected by the cars, right? So I think what we traditionally do is we put the bicycle lane closer to the road and then that protects parked cars that then protect pedestrians. If we can kind of, you know, put the bicycle infrastructure closer to the pedestrians on the other side of the parked vehicles, I think that that's a probably better way to design that. But overall, just kind of interested in learning and hearing a little bit more from the applicants at this point. But then also to the point of Mr. Carl made, I will also need an ex parte form. I did meet with the applicants on the 15th of last month. So yeah, that's all I got.
Commissioner Fam?
Thank you, Chair. In general, my comments are for if we do have a public hearing in the future, if we have some more details on kind of how the applicant would propose to activate these open spaces. The renderings look great, very lively. But I think more detail about how these open spaces will be programmed would be great. Also, if there's more detail in terms of the connection between the village and existing South Coast Plaza parking field. I know right now currently there's an existing crosswalk and signal, potentially a pedestrian bridge if possible, if it's allowed in the budget. But in general, what I would like to see is how that connection is established because we would assume that people will shop at South Coast Plaza and eventually mosey on over to the village. And so that how that is going to be executed, whether or not that's going to be an issue with limiting traffic flow on Sunflower, I think that's something that would be worth considering. As well as, I would appreciate a larger aerial that contextualized the village and the related Bristol project, right? Because both projects are similar in scope in terms of building height density. So if we have a larger view of this project, you know, right now it's zoomed in, but a larger context of how all the projected massing is going to look, I think that would be helpful. And lastly, I think just the nature of all these projects, all these views and conceptual renderings are being kind of shown at the location. But I think that sharing the concern of law residents, you know, adjacent to these properties are single-family homes, two-story homes, one-story homes. I think that if there is some visualization of farther down Sunflower, farther down Bristol, how the impact of a 25-story tower or mixed-use project would look in context with the existing cityscape, I think that would be helpful as well. But other than that, you know, it looks very lively. It looks very appropriate for the area. So I think it'll be a very interesting project. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Wu?
I think staff did a good job with the traffic certifications and the nice drawings and all that. I'm going to go another direction. I think most of my question might be addressed to the developer. We have an opportunity here to be bold, to make a statement. And I'm looking for what that statement is, you know, in terms of this development, you know? That's one question I have. The second question is, as I have time on my hand, I've been going to other regional shopping centers in the area, you know, South Coast Plaza, Spectrum, and places I didn't know existed, but I ended up there. And I look at who's there during the week. I find myself there, but I don't see a lot of traffic these days. And of the traffic, I don't see a lot of residents that look like Carl. And it's beginning to make me wonder about the demographic in term of shopping malls and stores because we have a generation of people that do not like to go into boxes. You know, they order stuff on Amazon and pollute our environment. So that's, that's, that's the question I have in term of like, has the economic studies been done to see if, I guess, once we have the housing, that will create a certain amount of shopper. As we create the walking path, we create traffic of people going around. I could use a bench or two, but maybe not a bench, but maybe a statue like of Einstein and you sit on his lap, you know? It'd be fun and it won't be a bench where you're going to lie on it. So, you know, but if you're a senior citizen, you get tired, you have a place to sit and pause before you walk down the road. And if you, for instance, in downtown Orange, you could actually walk and get some good exercise, but you could also go from bar to bar, you know? And in between, go and look at the antique stuff and stores or run into some college kids, which give you some diversity in terms of things to do and interaction with people. I say that because I talked to strangers, asked them where they are, where they're coming from, and you know, how's life treating them and what they're thinking. And there are other folks there too that go to other shopping centers like Brayall Mall and all that, but they end up, you know, at the Spectrum or these shopping centers. So I'm kind of looking, why will I be coming here? Well, number one, you're down the block and I could take a bus, I could ride my bike. So those are good parts of the plan. And I was wondering, this is part of a question for the developer, can we have more greenery? I know you have the rooftop and the greenery and open space in the Pindore, but could we have more excessive greenery, you know, and scenery? Because when I got lost driving around Irvine, you know, they've got trees all over the place, they've got plants all over the place, they've got paths. And it's a different vibration that you get, you know, driving through there. So I'm kind of looking at, you know, what is the statement that we're projecting when we, when this thing is up? When you go through the, how many phases is that? Nine or 10 phases, you know? And my other question is regarding to phases. It's not like you can complete one phase before you go to phase two, right? Or and you had to complete phase two before you go to phase three. You're probably doing portions of different phases, but you're talking about phases in term of completion dates? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct, Commissioner Wu. So these phases could overlap one another. More or less, that's where the applicant is proposing in terms of anticipating finances and et cetera.
Yeah, and it changes the nature for the city, right? You know, it gives us another place to gather. And if we're going to be gathering down here, I want to be, I want to feel welcome, you know? If I see Carl down there, I know I feel welcome and we could have coffee, you know? But I live in another part of this town that don't have this kind of stuff, you know? So, so I'm hoping that the greenery and the approach to open space and making it friendly for seniors would be the things that will make this more of a village. And when I think in term of the village, I'm thinking about, oh, should I say the word? Diversity, you know, because we have different cultures. We have different people in the city of Santa Ana and they need to feel like this place is welcoming to them. I noticed that you talk about tribal cultural comments in your public meeting. Is there any history that a small place, some rock or something could be dedicated to the people that were here before we were, you know? So those are just kind of, I think, broad question in term of not halting what we're doing with this project, but asking for a little more quality, a little more substance in term of thinking ahead. Because this is a big investment for, for the family and the developer, but it's also a big investment for the city of Santa Ana in term of what we're redefining ourself as a city. So with that in mind, I hope that city planners take that in mind as you do your due diligence in working with them. You see opportunities to put a little more water elements in it, a little more plant life, you know, and more trees that bloom and changes color that we could see, you know? And then we could take selfies by the cherry blossoms that bloom, you know? So it's just things like that so that it's enjoyable and everyone will enjoy it. We're not fighting over traffic noise and those kind of things. We have something positive energy that we could all enjoy. So those are the kind of comments that I would have in term of looking at the stuff. Give me a place to rest, you know? Let me walk my dog and, you know, invite some nice inventive kind of restaurants and places to stop and places where people could gather and talk.
I had a clarifying question. If we could go back to the slide with the phases, I don't think I heard the timeline for the phases. I wasn't paying attention. I should probably clarify. I was too busy looking at the phases.
So the timeline for the project is 20 years completion, right? We don't know the exact timelines for each phase. So it could range and just to kind of going back to Commissioner Wu, it really depends on the market, right? And so some of these could happen concurrently, right? But that's something that the applicant can probably speak more on. Just not sure if they might have that information today.
A tentative timeline about 20 years for completion?
For completion of phase five, yes.
Okay, sounds great. I think I shared this during the related Bristol project, but taking a parking lot and reimagining it, I think this is something that we need to do in this specific side of the city. I think this is, these are projects that we need, not so much to, to, to bring housing or things like that into the city, but it's just to reimagine our city, the southern, the southern gateway, I think it's a way to activate it. And as our fellow Commissioner Share, I did meet with the applicant last month and I did submit an ex parte form, so I did want to disclose that. I don't know if the applicant wanted to speak on anything that we just shared. I know it is a work-study session. I don't know if that's customary, but I did want to say that.
Sorry, what was the question again?
If we wanted to bring the applicant to answer some questions?
Oh, yeah. You are, you are welcome as a body to bring up the applicant and have them speak on their item and pose any questions. That is a primary function of this type of meeting.
Okay, if the applicant wanted to speak or answer any comments or questions that the commission just shared, please let me know.
It doesn't follow a formal hearing. We don't need to close our portion and then go to, it's more just a study session.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Chairman, Chair Aliva. Justin McCusker with the Segersham family, South Coast Plaza. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. There were some questions they're asking. I'm happy to address all of them. The best thing that a representative of the family can do is bring a whole group of experts in these different categories. And one of them tonight we'll probably touch on, which is your comments and questions about the greenery, the open space. But just to reiterate, I thought it was a great presentation by staff. My background on this project, I've been with the company and the family for almost 20 years. And I recall over 10 years ago, sitting down at the time with Mintai in planning, when we first, when the city was first kicking off the general plan and we were listening to what the city's vision was for the south, what became the South Bristol Corridor. And I do have that time period of overlapping with the family and hearing the questions from the city of Santa Ana, city staff and residents. When will you bring that South Coast Plaza? And Commissioner Wu, you mentioned the word quality. It's really in the name of South Coast Plaza and what the Segersham's bring forward. And this, we saw this synergy between the city embarking on its general plan, the first one in some decades within the city. And this opportunity to partner with the city, and we do view it as a partnership. As we mentioned before, four members of the family's managing partnership are Santa Ana High School grads today that run the company, heavily invested within the community and care deeply about it. So trying to bring that vision across the street, and you talked about the five phases of construction, you know, we always think everything that's there was just there at one time. But if you look across the street where we do have some height and density in Costa Mesa, those performing arts buildings, all four of them built at a different time. All of those office buildings built at a different time. It seems like it's just one, you know, period of vision and everything was built, but that was, that was decades in the making of seeing that. And I think what you see in some of the drawings and renderings today is the family now has felt ready with the city being ready with the general plan to bring that vision across the street to that 17.2 acre property. And we think we have the right plan to do so. And we touched on this in some of previous meetings and outreach to the public as well. Is one of the reactions at the Sunshine Meeting, when we had a member of the public say, you know, you just want to build what you can build. And then they were shocked because they looked and they saw that the general plan allowed us to build 2,150 units. We're building a very specific 1,583, at least that's how we've submitted the plan today. No one is really sure how to characterize the three, but we're excited that it's 1583. The FAR is five, we're just under the three. So the family builds with great intentionality. They don't want to bring a project forward that they don't think is fully thought out that can meet the market at that time. And Chair Aliva, that's part of the 20 years is to make sure that they're never feeling pressured to bring something online that the market, for whatever reasons, what have we learned over the last 25 years is, you know, unexpected changes in the market, the economy, just to be ready for that. But if I could for a moment, I wanted to bring up Mark from Rios. That's okay. He's our landscape design architect and he can speak directly to some of your questions. We're very excited because right now, if you did have the area, Commissioner Fam, you kind of questioned the viewpoint of it. Right now, it's a big asphalt parking lot. And this is going to be an exciting green area, an immersive garden that's going to allow not just people who drive to the area, but the community now that lives within the area to walk to it and enjoy things like concerts in the park, farmers markets, movies and all of those elements, which we're really excited to bring forward on that side of the street. So.
Before you bring them up, I just have to say, your family has been very generous to not only our community, but to Orange County. And knowing Henry and Jean and brother with the winery, who have been friends of our food bank. You know, I know where your heart is at. I know where your vision is at. My comment was basically to stir up that creative and commitment and quality that will come out as you go along because you're connecting people to, as Jean was saying, when she got dirty down there picking the bean and she known hunger. And that's how we related with the Orange County Food Bank. And when you really hear that, it was someone, you know, Henry had a vision and he was using his land to do that. And I was just kind of. and he was using his land to do that. And, and I was just kind of um chiming in on that process. So I thank you for coming to talk to us because I think we needed to hear that.
Absolutely, absolutely. My pleasure.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having us. Uh, just to give some context for your question, you know, our, our design was always uh meant to really celebrate and create a series of experiences. Um, you know, our goal is, is part of the open space design is always to create space that causes people to use it day after day and not just one time. We need to make spaces that engage people uh at every moment they can think of. Uh, open space cannot be today universal and big. It needs to be both big, intimate, layered. It needs to be many things and tha- that's where you start to create open space that, that is actually of quality. You, you spoke about creating a project of quality. And one of the things in the landscape side that we're very interested in doing is making sure that the spaces are diverse enough that they can capture your mood at different times, the day, different times of the week, different mu- um sort of perspectives you might be in after work in the morning. And that's what good open space will do. It doesn't just allow you to throw a, a block party or a, a big gathering, but it can be with you as an individual for that sit that you want to have after a stroll. It needs to do all of that today and that's what we're trying to do with the space. The other thing I would love to say is that, you know, currently of the 17 acre plus site, uh, you know, 30% of the site is actually open space. Uh, and then out of that 30% of open space, what we've tried to do is actually plant a lot of it. So we have 40% of that is actually planted. Um, even the bike lane on Sunflower, uh, we've been trying to really envision uh, the barrier between traffic and the, the lane as a planted median, so that there's actually some mass and some nature between the car and the bicyclist. And then another parkway between that and the pedestrian. And so that, again, it's this sort of layered experience that uh makes a experience rich and unfolding. So that's what we've been trying to envision uh how to approach the landscape.
Are we still going to be able to see the moon?
I hope so.
Because, because in, in your spaces now, they're great spots that you could sit there and, and really look at the moon.
Absolutely. I mean, the moon, the, the orientation of the mast to, you know, really faces sort of south and west and really captures tha- that time of dusk to transition versus uh non. And I think that's how the project really opens up to Sunflower. And I think that gesture is really unique for the project. Um, in fact, you know, I think it kind of differentiates it a little bit from the Bristol project from that perspective. And it gestures towards South Coast Plaza and really tries to welcome people in through scale of those retail buildings being one story, very, very low, very pedestrian friendly, so that you're not faced with the mass immediately off of that street.
You mentioned the Grove and people picnic there.
Well, yes, we, we have lawn areas that are not the whole thing because we also want to manage water use. We want to be smart. Um, we integrate natives plus drought tolerant because we want to make sure that the spaces look vibrant year round. Um, and so there's this whole sort of uh palette of plant material that we're looking at that really sort of gives a, a year round effect and doesn't go dry and, and um seasonally brown. And so we're trying to make sure that the landscape always responds so that it has maximum appeal to the users at different times of the year.
Question that I have, you know, would you be incorporating any artificial grass in this?
Ooh, artificial grass. Um, you know, it's a little detailed at the moment to say no, but as a landscape person, I would tell you I'm not a fan. Um, I'm not a fan only because when you, when you go there and there's, there's uses where it might be good. Dog park or, you know, things like that. There might be other functional reasons, but personally I always push for life. You want to feel it, walk barefoot on it. You want to feel temperature change, you know, with, with um our summers and our, you know, heat, those things really start to matter to the end user experience. That's just my thought at the moment.
As a person who's made plastic.
Well, ironically, tur- artificial turf is, it can be extremely hot and dangerous at that level, so.
Commissioners Camilla.
You too. Um, yeah, no, I appreciated the um, um inclusion of then that buffered planting. I think that that will make a substantial difference. We do see wherever that is installed, people tend to use the bicycles a little bit more. Um, and then even just as you're, you're thinking about all this, you know, with the native plantings, one of the things that I always think is quintessentially Southern California is the chaparral scent, you know, like just like the, the aromas that you get when you're hiking in like Orange County hillsides. I think they're really wonderful and can bring back a lot of positive memories and associations. Every time I think of plants, it's not just the um, oh my gosh, the visuals and the looks, but also what kind of experiences they provide for, for all senses and then.
Absolutely. And it's textures too, because it should be visually engaging as well. Uh, so how it moves in the wind, what, you know, not only scent and smell, but there's, there's so many things that the plant material palette can do if we only make sure to do it and add that dimension. I think, you know, landscape is most important in its understanding of microclimate too. You know, we have different scale buildings. We have different scale orientations, different orientations, excuse me. And all of those have to be taken into account because how a building might cast a shadow, how the sun might move, those create unique environments, so we need to make sure we plant according for success.
Yeah, absolut- absolutely. So wherever I can make the pitch for the uh milkweed and just the traveling monarchs that come through the, the city, always, always make that and appreciate you trying to find little places for them as well and for other pollinators too.
Then Noguchi Garden does all that and it's all stone and concrete.
A little hot, a little warm, right?
More, yeah. And it goes to my point that I'm, I'm hoping for more uh cultural greenery, you know, Japanese, Vietnamese, Chinese, Korean, uh, Mexican, you know, um, it cut, you know, Irish, you know, who knows?
And I, I think that would be all sort of part of the next phase of design where we can get into the actual specificity. Um, at the moment, we have postulated more on the water side of things, to be very frank with you, that I do think some of the cultural aspects could weave its way in as we uh progress in design. But that's a great idea though, because people relate to landscape.
Well, they become romantic spots and if you have a romantic spot, people go there, right? You know, and they come back again to celebrate that.
That's what I would love. Yeah, that's a sign of my success is if the people actually hang out.
Coffee on a rainy day in front of Tiffany is just great.
Any additional questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
Uh, yes, and this is not in relation to the gardening. This is really overall project. I appreciate the explanation why 20 years versus 10, because related, it is a 10-year buildout and you guys are looking at 20. You want to go slow on it. One of the things that I, um, two things I want to mention, one, so that other commissioners hear about it. I very much appreciated my meeting with the family, the concern about parking. And if they don't have it right, they know where it's going to go and that's going to be South Coast Plaza. And so I appreciate that being concerned and expressing that concern. Also, my suggestion was be nice to have an observation deck on that 25-foot story building, whether it's on the roof or the top floor, what have you. Is that something in the plan that the family would consider?
Yeah, it's very early in the process, uh, but even the comments earlier uh about art and bridges, the family tends to lean in, not lean back. So as the momentum of the project starts to go forward and we start to hear and see what could be an added amenity, I don't think they will stop short on amenities. If it fits what that building, that greenery, whatever it is at that time, the art piece, you've seen those areas grow as the family continues to lean in and, and Commissioner Benner, Benner, Benninger, we've talked about this uh before in our private meetings. You know, the family, they, they, Santa Ana wants reinvestment in their properties, right? I've, I've talked with council members, I've talked with city staff. And part of the issue is how do we get property owners in different parts of the city to maintain their property, reinvest in their property? So, you know, these are things that the family has done down over the years. The bridge between South Coast Plaza and Bear Street happened far after the completion of the Bear Street side of South Coast Plaza. You see, the family never says it's done. It's a reinvestment. The village uh really was born out of an exciting opportunity. I give a lot of credit to the city of Santa Ana for undertaking that general plan. I, I'd been here long enough to know how much of a lift it was for the city of Santa Ana to embark on that general plan process. And I lived and breathed it to some degree with you over the years. But questions like that, as far as the obser- 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 observation deck, art, all of these things will be a continued reinvestment by the family over the time in maintaining this. And what we really want to see with South Coast Plaza Village is what I think you see across the street, uh, around the performing arts. It's just timeless. This time, let's make something that you continue to invest in that's timeless, uh, that you keep adding to.
I'd like to join Alan and also thank you for what your family does, what the family does for the city. And one of two good examples is you're one of our sponsors for our awards night coming up next week, this through Thursday, in which we're going to recognize 33 yards in the city of Santa Ana, beautiful yards, and also um the 20 neighborhood heroes. So we appreciate your support and um in that matter.
Happy to be supportive.
Are there any additional questions? All right, with that, that concludes the work study session. Oh, questions, Commissioner Fam.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Um, the units that you were discussing, residential units, are we looking at um rental um assets? Or are they built to own?
They, they will be rental and, and part of the way, and one of my first projects for the family, which is in Costa Mesa, which I invite all of you and I've mentioned in some of this, which was Agilon. It's on Harbor Boulevard, very successful senior housing development. Uh, the family, uh, they were immigrant farmers and they leased every acre of land that they had before they were able to buy it. So we understand in many communities, um, the want and need for the for sale component, um, because there's a sense that that builds in a, an invested neighbor. Sagerrstroms hope that you believe that they are your neighbor over time. And when there's something you see that you want to celebrate on that site, you call us up. And if there's something that needs to be cleaned up, graffiti or trash or something, you call us up. The family is a, is a good partner. So they don't like to do a for sale because the land is then sold. Uh, they want to be your neighbor and they want to be your partner for decades to come as they have been for years.
Well, Jean was a neighbor. She'd lived in Floral Park.
Yes, yeah.
And I know that a related Bristol mentioned on their proposal, there, there is going to be a hotel on their property. Is there going to be something similar uh on this project as well?
We do not vision a hotel for this property.
Okay. Um, other than that, I think the project looks great. Um, you know, the development itself fits in across the street. Uh, hopefully, uh, you mentioned the, the property with the museum. I think that that open space sometimes is underutilized. You know, great open lawn, but not a- as dynamic as one would hope. I think that uh based on your, your vision here, hopefully, you know, once this project's developed, it's very high impact a- and very um dense in, in terms of activities, things like.
We want that to be that, yes.
Appreciate.
All right, no additional comment? Okay, that concludes our work study session. Thank you so much. Moving on to staff comment.
Uh, thanks Chair. I want to just make a couple of announcements that we're very proud of. Um, we recently informed from the Orange chapter of the American Planning Association. There might be some interference. Thank you. Well, we can get through this. Don't worry. We're winning uh four awards for projects in Santa Ana. Uh, we're getting a recognition for the Crossroads at Washington project. That wasn't submitted by us, but it was submitted by the developer. Uh, the Rafferty project in downtown is getting an urban design award. The uh Wise Place project is getting an advancing diversity and social change award. And I'm most proud of this last one. The outstanding planning agency award is going to the city of Santa Ana. We were also recently recognized by the OC chapter of the Association of California Cities for the PBX permit streamlining program. So it's been a very good month for the planning and building agency and for the city of Santa Ana.
Congratulations, y'all. There we go. Does the commission have any closing comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Benninger.
Ally or Ricardo, you want to announce the promotions you just recently have? Uh, we have a new uh.
Sure, I'd like to announce uh Nuvia Ocampo as the new executive secretary. She she formerly served as the uh commission secretary for about two years. And now in her third meeting, I believe, uh, Hemma Sapien is at, is the acting planning commission secretary.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, as I announced this a few minutes ago, the Comlink, I'll go a little lost, because I may, it was having their yearly awards on Thursday night. We're going to recognize 33 yards and 19 neighborhood heroes. We're also going to be giving out our humanitarian award. We don't offer this every year, but this year we want to honor Dave Reams, her work he did to help Comlink get started. Comlink's been existence for 36 years and our motto is to improve Santa Ana block by block. And that's what we, we end up doing. So this Thursday, you're all invited at six o'clock at the, at the Bowers. Thank you.
Commissioners Camilla.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Uh, yeah, just congratulations to staff, well earned. Um, you know, definitely, um, I guess we're all invited to the award ceremony, hopefully. There are multiple award ceremonies, it sounds like.
They're still finalizing the dates for these things, so um, yeah, of course, as with any one of these events, we will be sure to include.
Yeah, uh, but yeah, no, more than anything, uh, just uh thanking staff for all, all the work that we did here today. Um, did want to report back on one item from the Historic Preservation Committee meeting. So uh, we did, uh, I guess move forward with the uh potentially identifying historic murals in the city, uh, specifically the Medio Vasquez mural. So it looks like that will be moving forward uh with the uh votes uh from the uh rest of the HRC over there. Um, and just looking forward to reporting back once we get the specific sites. But yeah, if um, I think staff is still looking for nominations for potentially historic murals or public art. So that is something uh that I'm excited that we're doing again as far as proactively identifying um sites as we start also having a lot more development in the city. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Commissioner Fam.
No, uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I think there's Public Works here as well. So thank you for, for coming. I know we didn't ask many questions, but rest assured, when the time comes, we'll ask the questions. I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Wu.
I'd like to salute uh Public Works because um when we didn't have the police out there, it was Public Works that was out there. You guys were removing the graffiti the very next day, cleaning things up. And actually, uh, it was a lot better than having a patrol car there. Uh, because the uh National Guard didn't mess with you guys, you know? They were just doing their job, so um, and, and you did it quietly and silently out there. So um, I'd like to dedicate today's me- uh, tonight's meeting to the people of Santa Ana. We've got a beautiful city that cares about each other and we like to, you know, continue helping each other. And um, uh, we, we need to run our own city and, you know, we are trying.
I want to thank city staff for tonight's meeting. I know that y'all put in a lot of work. I know coming up with definitions that sound correct is a lot of hard work, so kudos, y'all, kudos. And congratulations on the, on the promotion ladies. I know that's exciting stuff. So, um, oh, and congratulations on the awards. That's that major.
We still think you're awarded El Barso.
Um, but with that, this meeting is. But with that, this meeting is is adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty.